All right, we'll call this meeting to this regular session, the city council meeting to order. Let's see, will you call the roll?
Josh Altum.
Present.
Gary Mitchell.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Lee.
Here.
Linda Rhodes.
Here.
Chad Wondell.
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
All right. So first time is our work session. There was a discussion desired of 2020 board and commission members. I was thinking maybe that would be something we would also cover on Saturday at our retreat where we can talk about the whole process. But does anybody have any questions about the board and commission appointment process now? I don't hear anything. We request for clarifications of items listed on the agenda. All right, then we'll end the work session and we'll go into executive session. So Leslie, you know what to do.
Do we need to state the?
Oh, that's right, sorry. I'm a little bit out of it.
I know.
We're going to go into executive session pursuant to 551.971 and 551 point. Is that a zero? Why do we say that? 551.071 and 551.072.
Just a few minutes, I'm going to place everyone into a waiting room that's not a part of executive and then we'll readmit everyone when executive is over.
You all ready? All right, I think we're ready to go. Let's see, you might want to stop recording this so when you post the recording. Is that everybody, Leslie? All right, so we're going to go into our regular session of executive session. Please note on the roll that everyone is still here. I do have any action to be taken out of executive session.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the settlement agreement between Auto Parts. You get their actual name here. ABS One Auto Parts, the Jose Jaime and Martin Marquez in the city of Kennedale and allow George to sign and execute that agreement.
I have a second.
I second it.
Second. Leslie, would you call the roll? Who?
Josh Altum, yes. Gary Mitchell.
Don't abstain from that one.
Linda Rhodes.
Yes.
And Chad Wondell.
Affirmative.
The motion passes for favor, one abstained, none against. All right, next up, citizens, visitors forum. I think we've had Joe Palmer wishing to speak, so. Joe, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, Joe Palmer, 4017 Sanguine at Court, speaking on behalf of myself and also the Kennedale Alliance of Business Owners. Congratulations to Kennedale Mayor Pro Tem Sandra Lee on her hard fought win to become Tarrant County Constable. I would be hard pressed to name a better Democratic candidate to be trusted with this important responsibility. Congratulations also to longtime Kennedale business owner and devoted member of the community Gary Mitchell for his convincing victory in the recent election to the city council. Mr. Mitchell's campaign signs carried the phrase "Your Voice on Council." The results of that particular race should be accepted as a clear mandate from the people as a signal that they have had enough of the tax increases of being nickel and dimed by their city leaders. It should also be taken as a clear message that they don't want to be inundated with apartments and other high density types of dwellings. Indeed, the desire to raise taxes and slam the community with high density rental properties never came from the people who members of council promised to represent in their decision making authority. Article one, section two of the Texas Constitution reads, "All political power is inherent in the people and all three governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their benefit. Does it benefit the people to tax them out of their homes or to curtail or disrupt year after year with increase after increase their ability to save for retirement? Does it benefit them to diminish the amount or quality of meals that they are able to afford to give to their children? Members of the council might be inclined to respond, as they had the last two years straight, by blaming the quote unquote need for a tax increases on the one council that voted against an increase in the last 20 or 30 years of overall increase. But to be accurate, any increase necessary to offset a preceding decrease need only match the amount of decrease. In other words, if you need to offset a single year of effective rate by increasing taxes double digit percentage points in multiple years, then maybe you shouldn't be on council. It's time to listen to the voice of the people and it's time to let people keep more of their own money."
Thank you. That's my person, we had to sign up to speak, so we'll move on to updates for the city council. Well, we'll start off with Gary. Gary, any updates for us?
Not at this time, sir. Thank you.
All right. Chad?
Hey, going out of order, okay. Just a kind of a quick reminder on a double front here that we're getting into a holiday season and there are a bunch of wonderful charities in our community that are doing a lot of great things to help. You know, I just want to mention our Kennedale senior outreach, they're doing the turkey drive. They are almost at their goal. And I believe the drop off, don't quote me, you want to go out there and look at it, but I think it's Thursday is when they need all the orders in for turkeys. So if you guys can post on your boards and messages, dig deep, find friends, contact Sarah and let her know that you can at least give a turkey and if you need help, Kroger's got them for 39 cents a pound, I think. I'm going to go buy 10 or 15 turkeys myself, so let's do this, let's reach that goal. And again, it's also that time of year and it's a great time to say shop local. Keep the money in Kennedale because it helps people here in Kennedale, you know, send their kids to sports and be involved in our communities, keep the money here. So that's all I have to say about that.
All right, Linda?
The only thing I would like to say is just thanks to our outgoing council. Appreciate all your hard work and a special congratulations to Sandra on her new appointment. And I look forward to working with the incoming and returning. And that's all, thank you.
Josh, anything?
I just want to mimic Chad and I want to say, you know, look out for all these charities, especially the Angel Tree at the fire department. I also want to congratulate everybody for the hard work they did during the selection of new elected members and the outgoing. Other than that, I've just been speaking with individuals about the water bill course and trying to get that stuff figured out.
Remember to mute once you're through so we don't get a feedback. And then I'm saving and relieve for last.
Well, I just want to say thank you to our fire and police department for doing everything they're doing during this pandemic. You know, we had Everman lost a police officer a couple of weeks ago from COVID and the fact that they're going out putting their lives on the line every day. I just wanted to tell them thank you, we appreciate everything that they're doing. And it's been a pleasure serving on this council, good and bad. We have some great people in Kennedale, we have some great people working for the city and on the council and I just want to say thank y'all for all that y'all do for the citizens, so I appreciate you.
Thank you, Sandra, we're going to miss you. I think next up is I have a proclamation for Arbor Day and I'll read that right now. Whereas in the state of Texas, February 1889 was the first Arbor Day celebration. And whereas trees play an important role in the ecosystem in which we live by reducing erosion of precious topsoil by wind and water, clean the air we breathe and the water we drink, producing oxygen, providing habitat for birds and wildlife and reducing heating and cooling costs by moderating temper temperatures. And whereas trees in our city increase property value, enhance the vitality of businesses, business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and urban community forestry is an essential complement of healthy future for the city of Kennedale. Whereas the city of Kennedale and Kennedale Beautiful Commission have partnered together to plant a tree and support the Arbor Day Foundation and Tree City USA programs. And now therefore I Brian Johnson, Mayor of the city of Ken, Dubai, claim Friday, November 20th, 2020, Arbor Day in Kennedale and Texas and calling the community to support efforts to protect our trees and the plant and care for trees to promote the well being of this and future generations. Signed, Brian Johnson. Arbor Day, updates for the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I have no updates for tonight, thank you.
Natural reports for the EDC and the city.
Mayor, I have no particular highlights. The reports are included in you guys' packets. No particular highlights, these are just the October financials, first financials of the fiscal year, so not much going on just yet. But I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Anybody got any questions for Lakeeta? Hearing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda, these require a little or no deliberation. Just a reminder, the second thing here is a plat. That's a ministerial function, as long as the plat meets all city requirements and is determined by the city, we have no choice but to approve such a plat. We cannot deny the plat. So consent agenda, does anyone want to remove anything off the consent agenda? All right, so entertaining motion for the approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, go ahead, Linda, ladies first.
Sorry, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll take the second.
All right, and Leslie, will you call the roll?
Josh Altum. Gary Mitchell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lee.
Yes.
Linda Rhodes.
Yes.
And Chad Wondell.
Affirmative.
It passes unanimously, Mayor.
All right, item for consideration. Consider an ordinance amending the school zone times and designating a portion of mistletoe drive as a one way street from Paula Lane to Reeves Lane on school days. I think that's probably going to be Melissa to give us a little background, or is that George?
Me, Mr. Mayor, let me make some comments and most of this information is in your agenda packet, but you'll recall that at your meeting in October, we presented a school zone ordinance. Council had some questions about that because of confusions with different times, zones for the different school districts and some concern about the fact that the mistletoe one way street was a bit confusing or ineffective at times. And so we've attempted to address all of those issues of council. And the ordinance that's back on your agenda tonight is the same ordinance that you had last month. But I've outlined in the staff report, the city staff met about these issues. We've had discussions with the school district and we've had some discussion with the academy up on Bowman Springs. And we had also met with two members of the council who live in the neighborhood that are affected by these school zones, Mr. Wondell and Mr. Pew, to talk about options that might improve the function of the school zones in the area. And what I've included in the staff report essentially are that we would recommend that council adopt this ordinance. And the intent would be that we would try to have the same hours of operation of those school zones around Delaney, Arthur and the junior high school and the academy to the extent that we could have exactly the same hours of operation of the school zones. That would be from seven o'clock in the morning till nine o'clock in the morning, from three o'clock in the afternoon until five o'clock in the afternoon. And that unless the school district changed their class times again, and that's what's driven all of this is changes in class schedules because of COVID. We would try to maintain those same hours in all of the school zones in that area. The two exceptions that for that might be that part of the school zone for Delaney is on a state highway, the parkway, and we would need to validate and clear with them that they had no objection to the school zone posting times and try to work with them. I don't have any reason to believe there'd be a problem with the hours we're proposing. And there is a situation and the intent would be to have those same hours of operation even up on Bowman Springs for the, I guess it's, is it the Fellowship Academy? Yes, the Fellowship Academy. The only exception that I might point out is that that school does have a release time for a pre-K class at 2:45. They've indicated that the hours we're proposing would not be a problem for them, that all of those students, and there's only a few of them, about 30, and all of them are picked up by parents. So that school zone time wouldn't be a problem for the Fellowship Academy. If it were for any reason, this ordinance, as it's written, would allow us to adjust the time of that zone, that school zone, to accommodate that earlier release. So the other recommendation is within, with regard to mistletoe becoming one way to the west when the school zones are in effect. And our recommendation here is that we come back to you, probably at the December meeting, and ask you to consider an ordinance that would prohibit any on-street parking there in that block area between Reeves and Paula in front of Arthur so that the one-way traffic won't be impeded by people parked along the curb. Right now, as buses, for instance, pull out of the driveway at Arthur and have to turn right onto mistletoe, if there are cars parked along the curb and because that street is so narrow, it, that presents a problem with traffic flow. And if just the one-way traffic going in both lanes is trying to drive down that street, parking on the street is an obstacle. So we're proposing that we adopt the ordinance on the zone times, allowing us to set those zones consistent with the schedules of the classes as we've outlined and that we come back and prohibit during the full day period, all the time, any parking on that little piece of mistletoe to make sure there are no cars parked there during those school zone hours. We think that will help both the traffic flow for the residents who live in the neighborhood and for the parents who are picking up children and dropping children off. I've had discussions with two officials at the school district, they have assured me that if the council adopts these time zones, these school zone times or ordinance, that they will work with us to get the word out to all, not just the residents of the neighborhood, but all the parents who are dropping kids off so that everybody understands these are the school zone times and there's less confusion about when those school zones are in operation. So with that explanation, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions, but our recommendation is that you adopt this ordinance and that we implement them to the extent possible so that they're all the same times as outlined in your staff report. Thank you, Mayor.
Questions? Chad, any questions? No? Josh, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Gary, do you have any questions?
No, sir, I've talked to several people about it and everybody seems to kind of be on board with it, people that live in that area, so it sounds doable.
Linda, questions?
No, thank you.
Sandra, questions?
No.
All right, well, I'll entertain a motion to consider an ordinance amending the school zone times and designate a portion of mistletoe drive as a one-way street in Paula's to Reeves on school days.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending the school's own times and designate a portion of mistletoe drive as a one-way street from Paula Lane to Reeves Lane on school days.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, Leslie, would you call the roll?
Altum.
Yeah.
Gary Mitchell.
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem Lee.
Yay.
Linda Rhodes.
Yes.
And Chad Wondell.
Yay.
Right, motion passes unanimously and I didn't hear affirmative from Chad. Go ahead, next. Consider authorizing the city manager award contract for physical access control keyless entry system equipment and services. I guess this is you, George.
It is, Mr. Mayor, and this item is on and again is in your agenda packet. We have provided you with information that we think is pertinent to awarding this contract, although the staff report doesn't specifically make a recommendation and I'm about to do that. But essentially this is being driven by, this is a COVID related issue in that, you know, as everybody's aware, city hall is closed to the public. The access to other public buildings is limited, the library and the senior center. But what, what we're attempting to do here is use the cares money that the city was provided to the federal government and through the county, to us through the county. And this is one of the things that we've suggested to you and provided and recommended on our list of, on our budget for the use of those cares funds to enhance our ability to protect the public and employees at the city's works sites. So this bid is for the purchase of that a keyless entry system for this building, the police building, the library, I think, is that correct, Danielle? And it, we provided in your, in your staff report, a summary of the bids that we received and there were six of them. We had established a grading system for those and there were a number of staff folks at those departments involved in the evaluation of the bids. The recommendation is that you award the bid and the contract to the one that's in the center of, if you're looking at that chart in your staff report, it's not the lowest bid, but it's the best value bid and the one based on the grading criteria we've established to STS 360. And again, I'd point out that our intent is to try to get this, we're asking you to award this contract. We would like to get it installed or at least to be billed for it prior to the end of the calendar year because we are required to spend all of that cares money that the city received for COVID related projects before December 30th. We can do that, these bids were carefully evaluated by the staff and our recommendation is that you approve and authorize me to execute an agreement with STS 360 and in the amount of 115,40903. And I'd be happy to answer questions or defer them to Danielle.
Questions, Gary?
Well, I was just thinking, is there anything else that was in consideration other than this keyless entry system? I mean, and what are the benefits of it? I know you and I talked a little bit about it last Friday, but what would be the actual benefit of this system?
Well, part, well, on this key, we've already done some other things with the use of the cares money that we were granted and, and we have sitting here in the building and are about to put in place some kiosk that will measure people's temperature and so forth when they come into the building and we're doing that. We've used the cares money for a number of other things, including the purchase of hotspots for use by the school district and by the city. We purchased technical equipment and computer equipment for use to allow us to have our employees working from home as is required because we're closed to the public. But are you asking, Gary, are there other security issues with the buildings themselves?
No, not really, but it can be used for something besides security, correct? So in other words, like if the fire or police needed something added to their equipment that would be covered under the cares, is that, is that possible?
Right, and we have used a lot of it for PPE in the fire department and for construction. We're using it to construct a new facilities in the main entrance and the main lobby of the police department, for instance, to try to protect the employees and the public from interaction when you enter into the police department. And I can provide you with the comprehensive list of everything we're using the cares money for that's previously been provided to the council. But yes, we've used it in the police department, in the fire department, in the library for computer equipment for this equipment to take people's temperature and when they come into the buildings. This security to allow us to manage foot traffic in and out of these buildings is critical. And it will become even more critical if we can get through this wave of the pandemic that we're all going through now and get to the point that we can reopen these public facilities to the public. We can still control access and be sure that people are safe when that happens. So there's a whole list of things that this money's being used for, this is just one piece of it.
Okay, I'm not sure that I understand the whole thing, but anything will help, you know, keep our citizens safe as well as our staff is very important to me as well, so, all right, that'll answer my question.
Chad, questions? Linda, questions?
I have two. One, will the whole bid amount, the 115,000, will all of that be funded through the cares?
Yes.
Yes, okay, and then the second question is, what about ongoing expense? I understand this is the initial thing, but what about, you know, ongoing for future budgets?
No, there will, there could be and some additional maintenance expense for this equipment going into the future. And right now, Linda, we are restricted from using and spending this money for anything and expense that's occurred after December 30th.
Right.
That's the rules today. Tomorrow, those rules may change and the treasury department could issue new guidelines that allows us to use it for things after December 30th. And if that happens, then perhaps some of that maintenance cost could be covered going forward. But right now, anything after December 30th that's related to this purchase would have to be funded in the budget.
Thank you. Thank you.
And also, George, didn't you say that, that there's a time limit on this money? It has to be purchased within a certain amount of time or you lose it? It goes back to the county? Didn't you tell me that?
We have to spend the money by December 30th of this year.
Okay, and, and is there more, how, how much more is there to be spent, I guess is the question, over the 115,000? I never got that number. So in other words, how much of the CARES money is actually left?
The total amount of CARES money that the city received through the county was $420,000.
Okay.
Look, Kita might be able to tell you off the top of her head how much we've actually written checks for and spent at this point, but we're trying to identify all of those things we can that will benefit businesses or benefit individuals in the community, such as the hotspots for the school district. Kids who had to have access to internet in order to go to school and so forth. And then the balance, if there is any left after we've spent it for those kinds of things. We will spend it for police and fire salaries and personnel benefits and costs. That we're allowed to charge to that money, to those funds. Because there's an assumption with the Treasury Department that all police and fire and public safety-related salaries and benefits are in fact related to COVID. Whether their jobs have changed, they're exposed, et cetera. So any balance that we have left out of that $420,000, the intent is to then pay what we can of those police and fire salaries. And if that happens, and I think it will happen to some degree, that's going to be a little more improvement to our general fund budget situation and fund balance, if we're able to supplant some of our budgeted money in police and fire with CARES money. But I don't have the total of what we'll charge police. But clearly, the expenses we're identifying, plus the benefit, the salaries of police and fire during those months that are eligible. All of that combined will far exceed our $420,000 allocation. So we should not be required to return any money to the federal government.
Okay.
Josh, questions?
I really question, just kind of want to let people know how important these resources are that we have. And, and how much we've spent, especially with fire department, PPE, cleaning supplies, cleaning supplies for the city. It all adds up real quick. The kiosks that we just received, I went into a fire department last week. And this kiosk, you look into it with your eyes, it takes your temperature and prints off a sticker and you put the sticker on your chest. So it lets everybody know that you don't have a temperature and all that. So all these resources that we get, you know, we lose this money if we don't use it. So why not, you know, spend what we have? And they're extremely important in these times, especially if we fix and get shut down again, so.
Sandra?
No questions.
All right. I think I got everybody. All right, did I get everybody?
Is it just City Hall or is it all of our facilities? Library, your citizen, police, fire?
It's not all of, it's not just City Hall, but Danielle, can you correct me? I think it's City Hall, perhaps the library, the fire department, fire station.
City Hall, fire department, police department, library and senior center.
All right. Well, I'll entertain a motion, align the C man for contract for physical access control, system, equipment and services. With the recommendation of STS 360 is the company for a total amount of 115,409 and three cents using CARES money.
I move that we award the contract for physical access control to the vendor STS 360 in the amount of 115,409 and three cents.
All right, let's see, would you take the vote?
Linda, were you the second?
I believe Sandra Lee was.
Um, okay. Josh Alton? Gary Mitchell? Mayor Protemley? Linda Rhodes?
Yes.
And Chad Wondell.
Affirmative.
Motion passing unanimously. Move on to public hearings, case PZ 2013. First up, we'll go staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll ask Melissa to present this case.
Sorry, I forgot I was muted. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, um, so the, I mean, we're actually representing the Kennedale Economic Development Corporation on this. They are the applicant. They own this property at Kennedale Parkway in Bowman Springs. 600 West Kennedale Parkway. It's currently zone C2. And the request is to do a straight rezoning to UV, Urban Village. This is a unique property. It's sort of a very odd shape. And it really was a leftover piece of property from the realignment of Bowman Springs. The EDC owns quite a few properties that we have been working with them for over a year now to look at each individual property and determine how they could best be utilized for development. I think there's been several goals in mind. One is, of course, is to increase property and sales tax dollars for the city. So currently, for example, this property is sitting vacant and not only not, is not bringing in anything at all to the city, but it's costing us each month to, to mow and maintain it. But additionally, of course, we want to bring in positive development, quality, high-quality development that can also serve as a catalyst for other development in the area. So we've looked at each individual property to determine what is the best possible development that could also bring in other development close by. So being a catalyst is very important. In this particular location, we looked at that potential at this very important corner. But also looking at the very unusual shape. So it's approximately 100 feet deep, about 650 feet long. So although it's zone C2 for commercial, the commercial, whether it's C1, C2, has about 45 feet of setbacks on the front and the rear. So basically, putting a commercial building with the current code requirements for setbacks for parking and so forth, really just isn't practical. So we have been looking at potential developments that would work well on this site, but also, as I said, could bring in tax dollars and serve as a catalyst for development. This is a zoning map to the side. This is the site, this long skinny piece of property. The zoning in the area and the uses are quite mixed with a combination of residential, commercial, industrial. Across the street, we have Old Town Four zoning. And I think one key about this area too, I'll go to the aerial, is that three of the four corners are vacant. So when we talk about a catalyst for development, that's very important. So there's an opportunity here to really energize this corner with a mix of uses that are urban village. As I said, you can see here the mix of uses from a single-family residential to the schools, to industrial uses and commercial, as well as the vacant land on the three corners. So this is the future land use map, and as you can see, Urban Village is, is exactly what is suggested in the comprehensive plan. That's that orange bubble here. So this corner, this, the corner and the immediate area is proposed to be an urban village. So the proposed zoning that the EDC is requesting is compatible, in fact, is exactly what is proposed in the comprehensive plan. In addition to that, the zoning code itself actually has maps of the different urban villages. So this is actually within our zoning code. And this is the site, and you can see here that this is the area where a mix of uses is proposed. So when you're talking about urban village, you're talking about a mix of uses in this, in this area, not necessarily for every parcel. So a mix of residential and commercial and retail and other types of uses that could happen in this area. So this is absolutely consistent with the comprehensive plan and the, the little map in the zoning code. This is what is called the Crossroads Urban Village Plan. So this is a straight zoning request from the EDC. But we've been working with a developer to look at this very unusual site and come up with something that makes sense. So we were looking at residential uses or residential use on the site. But in addition to that, and this doesn't depict this, but it's actually included in a contract that the EDC has approved, but it hasn't come to you yet. We wanted to take the zoning through first. But what is proposed is, and we've discussed having it here or here, but a neighborhood or pocket park that would be open to the public to use. But also part of that contract is to work with the city to fund, excuse me, the EDC, to, for the developer to fund a public art piece that would be a gateway piece here on the corner. And we've looked at that as an opportunity, we've discussed with the EDC, the opportunity to put gateway public art pieces that could be related in different park areas around town that are on major corridors. So this could be one of the first ones, and that's part of the, the draft agreement that the EDC has been working with this developer on. So these would be close to 1,600 square feet, a three-bedroom with a loft, two-bath, two-story kitchen dining room. This is the, the layout. We've worked with them on a very modern design. So, and they're looking at about 15 to 16 of these. These would be market rate, single-family homes. I think they're working with their, they're working with their analysis and working with their bank and their market analysis to look at whether they would be for lease or for sale, but these would be on individual lots and single-family homes. And this is a little bit different version of those. They were going for a very modern look. That's something that we've been working with them on. So again, this is a close-up of the site. This is about 100 foot deep, as I mentioned. This is currently zone C2, but a commercial use just really basically doesn't fit on this site. Having said that, if it was zoned UV, it would have a better opportunity to fit on the side just because of the UV setbacks or lack thereof. There's not a front or a side setback. So the UV really is, is a zoning category that's very flexible for the market. So of course, we have to look at not only what we'd like to see, but what the market can build and what the market, what will work in the market. This is approximately a $3.4 million investment. So you can see here that this is just property taxes to the city in the ISD. But it doesn't include the sales tax revenue. I think one thing that's very important that we've been working very hard on is redevelopment of vacant property on the parkway. So, you know, having this type of residential could really help with sales tax dollars as well. For hopefully what would be additional commercial development on the parkway in that intersection. The EDC, which of course is the applicant, recommended approval unanimously at their last meeting. The P and Z recommended approval unanimously as well, six to zero, and staff recommends approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hold on for those questions. We're the developer here. You've talked to, are they here? Do they want to speak at all?
And this is Joel Bill.
Does he wish to make any statements?
Yes, good evening. Thank you. No, that pretty much speaks for itself. We believe that what, what you saw in the overhead view allows the best mix, I guess you will, of initially rentable, single-family houses. Possibly for sale to tenants at a later date. The urban village zoning would allow us to work within the city ordinance and city code with the setbacks and the aesthetic. And, you know, we also think that because this is such a primary entrance coming into the city of Kennedale, that it will spark some of that growth and, and, and some of the things that are going on down further south on Kennedale Parkway, kind of spur some of that growth along as well. And get people to move to Kennedale. Kennedale's, the size-wise is a big city for as few residents as it has. And we just think it's a good thing to bring more people into Kennedale to live in Kennedale and spend their money in Kennedale.
All right, thank you very much. So before we get to questions, because we'll come back to the staff, I'm going to open the public hearing. And Joe Palmer starts to speak. So Joe, you're on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for your time again. Speaking on behalf of myself, speaking on behalf of COBO, the Kennedale Alliance of Business Owners. I've had the chance to speak to business owners, some of whom are near that intersection, near that property. And they have either expressed to me that they don't want it there, that they think it should remain commercial. Or in one case, a business owner didn't know that this was even happening, but she did want to know more before she could form an opinion. And so my main point regarding this agenda item is that it was passed by planning and zoning this last Thursday. That's four business days. The minutes for the planning and zoning meeting where it was approved aren't even available yet. They're not available on the website. So if somebody in the city, resident of the city or taxpayer, wanted to see more about this and find out more about it before they could form an opinion and communicate that opinion to members of council, they are unable to do so. And if there's video of that meeting, please direct me to where that is. I don't see that anywhere. The staff report contains nothing regarding people speaking against or for this at the P and Z meeting. As I said, minutes are not available. The, if we're concerned about quality of living and giving people a place to live, is if that is the function of city government. We can pretend that it is for purposes of this discussion. There is a trailer community just north of this location. I know you're aware of it. I drove by there today, and my understanding is there are people who live in that community who would like to upgrade their old mobile home for a new one. And those of you who have seen some of these new mobile homes that have high-pitched roofs, they've got architectural shingles, bay windows, like little mini cabins. And I think that would be something that people would do who live in that community. You would achieve the result you want without getting into the EDC, selling property to a developer. I'm sure this developer is top-notch, but with all due respect, he made the assertion that this would somehow spur or stimulate sales tax. There is no guarantee, well, first of all, that anybody would move into these homes immediately. And I say that because there are plenty of rental properties around the city that are vacant. And that's another point separate by itself, that, you know, to some extent, you're interfering with the market forces that are already available out there. People own properties, they're trying to rent them. Let's get people into the city. I'm with you. People need to move here, get excited about living in Kennedale, but this particular location is too small to build what you are describing. And you've got, I'm going to just dare say, 800 to 1,000 dump trucks, heavy-duty trucks, making that, making that turn, going up and down. It's very loud at that intersection. And I really just don't think, you know, artwork at the corners is going to solve your problems. You've got major financial problems. And that's really the main point here is while you're wrapped up in something like this, discussing what to build here in the form of residential buildings. You know, you really need to be tackling your financial crisis that you're in. That's what the voters want. That's what the voters communicated to you on election day. You need to tackle the tough issues, not building little houses on the corner where they don't even fit. So once again, business owners in that area either have no idea what you're doing here, they need more time, or they are adamantly opposed to it.
Thank you, John. All right, if they have something to speak? I will close the public hearing then.
No, Mr. Mayor, I want to speak.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Jeff Navarres.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff Navarres, 1009 Estates Drive in Kennedale. I am super excited that this property is finally going to sale. I asked the council to support this. If you've lived around here, then you understand that this property's been there since. If you've lived around here, then you understand that this property's been there since before I've been here, and I've been here for, for many, many years now. And it just sits there and does nothing. And, and, and we own it basically, the EDC owned it. So we've looked into businesses and how they would go there, but nothing is feasible. A gas station won't work and, and there's just not a feasible way to do a business there. But if a developer thinks that he can sell houses there and do something with that, the only other option, which I've, I've put forth through this council last year was to have the city do a farmer's market and then run a farmer's market there. But if you compare what we will get in tax revenue from housing versus a farmer's market, there's just no brainer here. That's a very small property. Mr. Palmer's right, it's very weird. You can only do so much and residential is one of the very few. By changing the code to the, to the unified code, I'm sorry, the plat, you are, you're, we're within the, the goals that we've set forth over a decade ago by the city. And these are just one of the many steps we're gonna have to be doing for the next couple of years that you'll see that's just gonna develop for the whole area. I remind everybody too, that these properties will go quickly. Texas and Florida are the two fastest growing areas during COVID. New York's bubble just popped because half their population in the city is moving out right now. And they're coming to Texas and they're coming to DFW and they are renting. And, and one more side point too, I've known Joel for over a decade. He's a good man, he's a good business owner, and he's one of those good property owners that I always wanted to have as a property manager if I didn't have a good one before we bought a house. He's just one of those guys that always keeps up with the properties. And he has many developments in the DFW area. So this is not his first rodeo as well. So I asked council to support this. This is definitely good for that Parkway, what we need to do. Despite what everybody says, you can't complain that the tax is too high. The only way that we can fix this is by building more housing. More roofs we have, then the more businesses will come because the population won't support business for risk assessment. So these are one of the many steps. And there is a property across the street that's also interested in development. So this can be a catalyst, as Melissa says. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff. All right, anybody else? No, I am closing the public hearing. And then staff response, and then we'll get questions from the staff.
I'm just a couple of comments based on what was said. Notices, of course, were sent out to property owners within 200 feet, which we always do. We don't send out, you know, plans with a straight rezoning. This is just a straight rezoning to UV. So although we show the plans, this is not for consideration for a site plan or design approval. This is a straight rezoning to UV.
All right. So let's go around and get some questions. Gary, any questions here?
Well, several thoughts. I don't know about too many questions, but several thoughts. Just my personal opinion, you know, I've heard two different things. One thing I heard from Melissa, they were homes for sale. But when I met with them the other day, they said they were gonna be rental properties and then the manager said that as well, lease, probably rental. If they're homes, that's one thing. If they're for sale, but it's another thing if they're rental properties. I know what rental properties turn into, and I think everybody else does as well. I'm, I'm just, somebody's gonna have to convince me that that's best suited for that piece of property, something that we're gonna be trying to rent out. I, I'm, I'm not sold on the idea of renting. In other words, apartments, I mean, even though they're high, they're, they look really nice and all the renderings, they're a high end. But to me, it's just another rental property. So I'm just not, I, I just, somebody's gonna have to give me some more info. And on the, on the urban village, what else is there? Is there anything else? I mean, is potentials for this developer to build homes that are actually for sale? Is there, could there be a mixed use of where you had some retail with the, maybe the rental on top, like a, something that we talked about on that other subdivision going down there on the sublet? Could anybody answer that one for me?
I can answer that for you. You know, when you, when you do a zoning case, you can't put onto a zoning case that it's required to be rental or homeowner or whatever. Of course, anybody that owns a property is free to rent their property or sell it or what have you. So the short answer is no, you can't put on a zoning, you can't legally require in a zoning case that something be rental or owned or what have you.
So this will have to come back before the city at some point in time before they build, right? So in other words.
It actually would in the form of the EDC contract. The EDC has already approved the contract, but that contract would come to the council and that would have certain stipulations to require that it be that quality of development. So the short answer is yes, it will come to you from the EDC in the form of the contract, proposed contract with the EDC.
Okay.
So Melissa, real quick, I'll pop from Gary's question. If we rezonate UV, then are you saying, I mean, they can come back and build rental properties without our approval because we've already put in UV and that's accepted under the contract, right? They don't necessarily have to come back just to rent.
Yes, I mean, when you approve UV, you, just like any other zoning, are approving any use that's allowed in the zoning. However, there will be controls within the EDC contract if you approve. Of course, if you don't approve the zoning, the EDC contract goes away because the development goes away. But if the zoning is approved, then you'll see the EDC contract, which will list parameters on what needs to be built there. If that answers your question. And, you know, in terms of the rental versus the purchase, my understanding all along has been that they are looking at the potential for lease or the potential for sale, or whether it's for lease initially, and then they determine to sell them. That's something looking at from a market standpoint. I think what we've been looking at from a staff standpoint is having quality development that's, that's well maintained. One thing, for example, that's very important is to make sure that if they are for lease, that all of the property is maintained by a management company. A lot of times that's concerned with the leased property. And when you have individually owned homes or duplexes or what have you, you can have that issue. In this case, if you don't have that issue, you have one. It's the equivalent of an HOA essentially that maintains all the grounds. So that's something that is kind of being worked through their analysis on their financial institution in the market.
Gary, any follow up questions there?
No, I mean, it's just not, there's too many ifs there for me. So just, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Will you just mute then so we'll get the feedback?
Yes, sir.
Chad?
A couple of quick clarifications. I've seen two or three different maps now that show the right of way not included in the parcel boundary and some of it, like the zoning shows it is. What's the current plat status of that parcel? Has the right of way been planted out of that? Does it need to be replatted?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. Shield is actually replating that. When the, the street was realigned, for whatever reason, the street got included in the, in the parcel. So obviously we don't want to sell them the street. So Shield is currently replating that. And that's actually why you also don't have the contract is we need that plat to include with the contract that does not include the street. Without the street, it's a little under two acres, about 1.7 acres.
Okay. And then I, I know this isn't about a site plan, but on the image that was submitted, there is showing a curb cut on the Kennedale Parkway. I don't think that's gonna happen. I, I don't see the state giving us a curb cut less than 100 feet from an intersection. That's my two cents on that. So I.
And that's probably true.
Yeah, I am a big stickler of one way in, one way out. I do not like that. To me, that's a dangerous scenario. I would like to see, you know, I don't have a problem with the zoning per se, but I don't think the way this is currently presented meets the spirit of UV zoning. Like I would envision this actually on Bowman Springs, not having some alleyway wrapping around it. That's just kind of what I see when I see the urban village thing is it's supposed to be this uniform frontage with the walkability through it, not just a neighborhood set off another street. So as far as the zoning goes, I, I don't think that's an issue for me, but from what I'm seeing here, this doesn't seem to live up to the spirit of the UV zoning as shown. I don't know. That's when, when I, when I see the urban village in my head, I don't see a street then offset by another street and then homes behind another road. I see those all coming up to the actual street that's currently.
No, they, they actually will. It may not be showing well in that drawing, but the properties will actually be near the property line, you know, with, they might be five feet back to allow for just a little entry in a garden area or what have you.
Well, the, the one that we saw shows an alleyway, 25 foot alleyway going all the way around it, a big circle. And the homes actually being inside that circle with Bowman Springs being completely separated.
Yeah, so this, this will not be here. These will have to, these will be towards the front. And you're correct that this is not, you know, this is really was a very early rendition and it's not, it's not finalized, nor have we gone through text. There definitely will not be an entry here.
Yeah, I mean.
So this is not finalized. It's what we have at this moment, but these would be pushed up with an alley in the rear. And I would imagine that there'll be an entry somewhere over here. You can't have.
There's definitely gonna have to be a second source entry. I know, jump in, Mr. Brown. I'm, I'm pretty sure there's gonna have to be some alternative entrance to something like this. I mean, linear wise going up Bowman Springs, there's, there's definitely the, the space for it to get good separation between intersections, but I definitely don't see that cut coming on Kennedale Parkway.
Yes.
Chad, Chad, this is Joel Beal. Can I, can I respond to that real quick?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Yes, the, the, the cut on Kennedale Parkway was, was, was before we dug into some code issues. Just a couple of notes, we don't know exactly how much land we're dealing with, even though we measured it, but we don't have quite as much as we initially thought. So I'm sure once we get the final plat in and do our measurements, there will be no drive or street in the front. There will be nothing but green grass and a, a brick type of brick town kind of masonry fence slash safety barrier. And there will be two entrances off of Bowman Springs, one at the end, one in the middle. And the only car parking and car entrance will be in the rear. But again, the exact measurements, we're waiting on the plat and the survey.
And then regardless of whether these are rental or ownerships, do we know if they're gonna be planted as individual lots? Like a traditional.
Yes, that is exactly our intention. And just to clarify that a little bit, this is such an unusual property. Sure, you see it in other towns like Fort Worth. But our bankers frankly have a difficult time understanding the concept of single family homes that are not townhouses, but they're not the traditional lot line. So initially our financing is for rentals, but they will be individually platted so that they can be sold off at a later time to the tenants, to the residents. That's the intention, but for finance purposes, we have to go in as rentals because that's the only way the numbers make sense for our banker.
That's, I need to double check my notes. I think that's really the biggest questions I had so far.
All right, thank you, Chad. Josh?
A couple of questions here. May I address Joe Palmer? I want to know if he can tell me which business owners were against this project? If he can tell me that information? If he's still with us?
Councilman Altam?
Yeah.
Thank you for the question. It's a relevant question. I'm not willing to disclose who I spoke to. I would ask that you just take it at face value that I did speak to people and that they either were against it or in the case of one, did not know that it was happening, but wanted to know more information.
Opportunity to get a notice if they're within so many feet. So I think it's, it's interesting that you're against the, the senior development on Mansfield Cardwell.
I appreciate, I appreciate that you think that it's interesting, but I would like to finish my answer if you don't mind, sir.
I'm, I'm done.
I'm not done with my answer, sir.
So you, he asked you, how many people you've talked to? You've answered that question.
He asked me who I spoke to.
Yeah, and right, he, he asked who you spoke to and you don't, you don't want to answer that, that's fine. That's the answer to the question, Josh. What's your next question, Josh?
You don't want a full answer, that's fine.
My next question is the, a couple of them might have been answered. I wanted to make sure that we've talked with Text Dot prior because I don't want to get burnt like we did on the Hammond project, which you said that the right of way and stuff, of course, after the drawings, that they're gonna be more current. So I think also another question I had was the upkeep of the facility. Will it have some sort of HOA or how do we assure that the upkeep? It's gonna be up kept?
Let me answer first your question about Tech Site. We anticipate the entry off of Bowman Springs, which is a city road.
Right.
We should, we shouldn't have that issue. I do not anticipate an entry off of Kennedale Parkway at all. It's too close to the corner.
Okay. And then the upkeep, is it gonna have any kind of HOA or, I mean, who's gonna be in to make sure that this, this place is up kept? Written in the EDC contract or?
Yes, sir, this is Joel Beal. I'll, I'll go ahead and answer that question from my perspective. Yes, the, the, of course, one is a rental, it's a management company and Peak Management Group, they, they've, they've, they're already doing several projects in the DFW area, including one over in Forest Till. So while they're being rented, absolutely professionally managed, that's actually a condition that's been placed upon us. And then to maintain the continuity after they're sold, there will have to be an HOA, homeowners association to keep up these same standards. Because one of the prerequisites that we understand is that they maintain a, a high level of appearance, high level of maintenance. And, you know, a lot, not a lot of the stuff you might associate with kind of a lower class rental. This is a gateway to the city. We well understand it. And it's really in our financial best interest to keep it up because we're trying to attract the quality people that would otherwise move to Mansfield or Arlington. So we have competition and, and we just want to, we want to put some supply, you know, some, the supply there for that demand. Right now, and I'm looking at Netras as we speak, right now, there is one rental in the MLS system in the entire city of Kennedale. So other rentals that might be in there are probably just kind of like the Craigslist type of rentals, and that is not at all what we're looking for here. These are single family homes that are reasonably priced, quality constructed with high standards of maintenance, appearance, parking in the back, not a lot of, you know, stuff laying around. That's been quite clear to us from the beginning. And that's how we do our properties currently.
I appreciate the answer. I also appreciate you wanting to build here in Kennedale. My last point is, I just want to let everybody know, you know, it's not our job to decide whether something's built here on this piece of property or not. Our job is, this is a zoning request change. And in our master plan, that is urban village. And so we need to stay true, in my opinion, to stay true to the master plan and, and make that urban village. Now, later date, if he decides to build there, we can decide that at a later date, but that's not our decision right now. And so I guess that's all I got.
Thanks, Josh. Reproton possible, likely. That's a long title.
No, I think everything's been said. I'm good.
All right. Linda Rhodes?
I don't have any questions or comments.
All right. So next thing is to consider an ordinance regarding case PZ 2013. Honor and motion. If I don't have a motion, I'll declare this as failed without a motion. So does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve Casey PZ 20-13. Consider ordinance regarding a request by the Kennedale Economic Development Corporation, EDC, for a rezoning from C2 to commercial to UV urban village for approximately three acres. Located at 600 West Kennedale Parkway, Lot 8, Block 1, Wildland Acres Edition.
All right, so there's a motion to approve Case PZ 2013. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Melissa, would you call the roll?
Josh Altum.
Yeah.
Gary Mitchell. That red. Mayor Proton Lee. Linda Rhodes.
No.
And Chad Wondell.
Motion passes three to two. All right. So the last thing we have on the agenda is adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, before we adjourn, somebody that didn't hear who voted, that's why we have the cards, but the for that last PZ case was Josh Alton, Chad Wondell, and Tander Lee, those guests were Gary Mitchell and Linda Rhodes. So we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Let's call the roll again, adjournment.
Josh Altum?
Yes.
Gary Mitchell?
I'm gonna say there is a yes.
Yes.
Unmute. I'm sorry, I had it muted. That's a yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
And Chad Wondell.
Affirmative.
All right, well, thank you, everybody who attended the meeting. Congratulations again to Gary and Sandra and Linda.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
See you all next time.
Thank you.
Hope you get to feeling better.
Yes.
Feel better, Mr. Mayor.